Call or order the meeting of the Select Board for July 1st, 2024. Please rise.
As we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we have a moment of silence to honor our service personnel, both here and abroad, and both past and present. Okay, please be seated. All right, we don't have a large agenda tonight, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna take the agenda out of order because we have people in the audience and we can have them be on their way after this. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna have the board and committee appointments. So for the Dartmouth Tree Committee, we have Susan McLaren for two years and Ann Parsons for two years.
Motion.
We do have all the attendance for what we're appointing tonight.
I've looked over the attendance, Mr. McDonnell, and I'd like to recommend or put a motion forth. As both Susan McLaren and Ann Parsons have attended 100% of the meetings, I'd like to put a motion forth to appoint both of them to the Dartmouth Tree Committee.
Okay, and we'll appoint them with a gold star also.
Yes.
Perfect attendance.
A gold star?
Perfect attendance.
All right, so a motion made by Mrs. Brooks and seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Okay, just as a precursor, I also want to know that the meeting is being recorded and available on DCTV, and all votes will be voice votes.
Mr. McDonnell, I'd like to make a motion that Russell Robinson, James Thompson, and Cynthia Rose all be appointed to, back to DCTV for three-year terms. Russell Robinson and James Thompson have attended the meetings 100%. Cynthia Rose missed one meeting but had a special meeting with Peter Chase to be brought up to speed on what she had missed, so I'm gonna count that as 100% as well.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Next one, South Coast Bike Way Alliance.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Sandra Maderas for three years as she has 100% attendance to those meetings.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Youth Commission.
Mr. McDonnell, I'd like to put forth a motion for Krista Machado to be reappointed to the Youth Commission for three years, having attended 100% of the meetings.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, none unanimous. Veterans Advisory Board, all one-year terms.
Right, I'd like to put through a motion to appoint David Rucker for one year. He has attended 100% of the meetings. Joseph Toomey, one year, he's attended 78% of the meetings. And Robert McCowell, one year, 78% of the meetings.
Okay, motion made to appoint David Rucker, Joseph Toomey, and Robert Mahold to the Veterans Advisory Board, made by Mrs. Brooks. There, a second. Seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion.
What about it?
All those in favor say aye.
Let's go, she said that.
Opposed, none unanimous.
Mr. McDonnell, I did not make a motion for Peter Fusco. I don't know when he, if this is a new appointment, but he has not attended any meetings.
Okay.
And none of the information that I received, or we received in our packet, did it state that there was a reason why, so at this point, I am not putting forth a motion for him.
I will, um... When are we sending a letter?
Well, we'll reach out, we'll reach out to the chair to find out what's going on. Okay, Village Parking Committee.
I would like to put forth a motion that we reappoint the Parking Committee Linda Hops for a three-year seat, Stanley Mickelson for a three-year seat, Jill Law for a three-year seat. She has committed in writing to attend the meetings. And Dave Russell has been acting as a chair, so I don't, he didn't have a year-long appointment there, but I would tell us to reappoint him as well to the Village Parking Committee.
Motion made by Mrs. Brooks, there, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mickelson.
I shouldn't second my own name.
Oh, second. Seconded by Mr. Tattelbaum. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Waterways Management Committee.
Mr. McDonnell, I'd like to put a motion to have Anthony Salvito to a three-year term, having attended 89% of the meetings, to the Waterways Management Committee.
I don't know.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. All right, that concludes our appointments.
But there are some other bodies that have not sent in their...
Yep, we're still waiting for the attendance information on that.
The attendance, information, yeah, okay.
Yes, so for the appointments that were not on this meeting, including the one for Mr. Fusco, we will carry those over to next meeting.
Does that include the ZBA as well?
That includes the ZBA as well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so that concludes Pot 3 of our new business. Pot 1 is the Town Administrator's Search. Okay, Mr. Vitelli.
Thank you. So inside your packet, you do have a summary memo, so prior to this meeting, I know there was some correspondence with a couple of different firms to put forward some draft proposals and give us some preliminary pricing, based on conversation with this board from the prior meetings, as well as just taking a look at the procurement on this. You know, there are a couple ways that we can proceed. In your packet, you have three options before you in terms of how these services can be procured. I know there were some questions at the last meeting with regards to the pricing, you know, and having it be lump sum. There were some questions with regards to whether or not the board wanted to bring in these firms for interviews, and then with regards to some specific questions such as timeline or, you know, method for advertising and things of that nature. So the three options that you see here, option one, we can do three written proposals, you know, based on a similar scope of work, so we would get the proposals back from the firms or the consultants, and we would award based on the lowest price. Option two is we can work with Collin Center. I know that was one of the firms or agencies that we reached out to. We do not need to go through procurement because they're a political subdivision of the Commonwealth, and so with that, you know, the town could work with them on a scope of work and, you know, continue with utilizing their services. Last option is RFP. It's a little bit of a longer process, but with that, you know, the town would develop a scope of services. It would set up evaluation criteria for the firms. The proposals would be sent out, and when they were submitted into the town, there would be sort of two parts. There's the technical proposal that the town would review and score, and then there's the independent price consideration. So with that, you know, we as a town would score the firms, you know, maybe schedule interviews before the board, have them come in, answer particular questions, and then again, proceed. But with all these options, it is my recommendation that Ms. Perry, who is in our Town Administrator's Office, facilitate this procurement on behalf of the town. So for me, you know, with there being a conflict of interest, you know, I have consulted with Town Council, and they do not see any issue with me advising Ms. Perry on this in terms of making sure that the draft language is proper and to obviously provide advice on the procurement, but when it comes to actually pushing it out, corresponding with the firms, getting the proposals back and communicating with the board, it would be my recommendation that that go through Ms. Perry. And I will note that she is procurement, she has her procurement designation, which is in your packet as well, so she is qualified to assist the board with this.
Okay. All right, board members? Thoughts? Questions?
It's pretty straightforward.
I think we should certainly engage Ms. Perry for the job.
I think that's, I think that's probably the best course of action. Plus the fact that since she is, you know, MCPO, MCPPO certified.
Do we need to vote on that?
I would think so.
So with the board's decision tonight, I've already had preliminary conversations, and Melanie has agreed to do this for the board, so I would work with Human Resources following this meeting to put that in place. And what that would be is essentially this additional scope of work through the duration of the procurement, you know, for the firm, working with them on invoicing, things of that nature.
All right, so, all right, so we're gonna, so basically what I'm hearing now, or what I'm getting as a flavor, is that the board feels that putting Melanie Perry in charge of the procurement and the search, dealing with the firms and whatever we decide, whichever option we decide to go through. So now the question is, what option are we gonna do?
Do we need to vote on Ms. Perry?
Um, if you wanna make that, if you wanna make it official, we can make it a motion and make a pile of the record.
I think we should, just in case.
Yeah, okay.
It wouldn't hurt to do it.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Melanie Perry, let me get, as, as she carries the Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official, the MCPPO certification, that we appoint her as the Procurement Officer for Matters with this Town Administrator's Search in hiring.
It'll be to manage the, manage the procurement process on behalf of the town.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. O'Neill. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Okay, Melanie, it's your balls, soon as we start it up.
And with that, there is a process, so what I will be doing tomorrow is I will reach out to the state, and there is a delegation form that I have to submit on behalf of the town, and I will put that information in so that Melanie can manage the procurement.
Okay, good. All right, so now, how, how does the board wanna proceed with the process? Do we wanna do the RFP, the option three? Which probably seems, because one of the things is that we, even though we have three, three proposals, two of them are alike, the third is not, so what we need to try to do is try to get the proposals all on the same even keel, so that we're looking at apples and apples versus apples versus oranges. So I think the best...
And we're not, oh, sorry.
It would be, right now, we don't have a proposal from the third party that...
We have a letter.
We have a letter, but we don't have a proposal that would leave us to make a decision
Right.
in option one.
Right, so I, I would think if we go the RFP route, everybody follows the same criteria, everybody bases their estimate on the, on the same criteria, and then the board can review the whole thing, you know, whatever's available out there. And it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, just these three, it can be other, other firms.
As might apply, yeah.
If I may make a point of clarification, too, is with all three of these options, you know, that draft scope of work, we could develop, you know, Melanie would bring that to the board, and regardless of how we went through the procurement, you know, we would make sure that, you know, if there was certain expectations of what the board would want in that draft scope of services, such as timeline considerations, you know, how, you know, interview, you know, protocols might occur where the town may wanna advertise this. So Melanie would work to be able to provide that regardless of options, but to the point that was mentioned is, you know, certainly if we did RFP, you know, we could get more than three firms, you know, additionally, three is the minimum for that first option, but we can certainly, the town could certainly reach out to more firms, so I just don't want that to be a...
So, as a point of clarification, if we vote to choose option three, then we have no discussion tonight on the, the three proposals before us because we're gonna send the RFP and wait for more information.
Right, right, we, basically, if we vote for option three, then what we're doing, we're developing a, a document so that all, so that anybody who does these type of services can base their proposal on, with the expectation, what our expectations are, what our timeline is, and whether they can deliver, you know, and how they can deliver.
This is, this is certainly going to extend that timeline considerably.
Yeah, but I, at this point in time, I don't, I don't think it's going to be too much of a problem, because I know right now, because looking at the, the jobs out there and what's out there, really isn't that much right now, so.
Well, I'm concerned about the timeline. I don't wanna, I wanna move on this.
Right.
And, and, you know, at least get a handle on where we're at at a quick, at a quick pace.
But we have to make sure however we move, we do it within...
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that, but the other nice thing about option three is, it isn't always about the lowest price either.
Correct.
So that, you know, that gives us...
Correct.
...an opportunity to, to decipher who we would like...
It's the best...
And price will not be...
Whatever's the best is for the town.
Lowest price will not be the objective.
Right, right, that's why, you know, it's like buying a rocket based upon the...
Well, whatever, you know, I like that, that portion of it, because it gives us that opportunity.
Yep.
It also seems that option one and two aren't really that realistic for us anyway. Could we, before we vote, would it be prudent just to talk a little bit about the timeline that option three is gonna be, so we can have a somewhat of a realistic view of how long this is gonna take?
Well, I think developing the RFP will take basically, so, at least, I mean, fast track, I mean, fast track, we could get a draft for Monday.
So, because this is a short week, unfortunately.
Right.
We have to post Monday's agenda tomorrow.
Okay.
So, because of the Fourth of July, the 40-hour notice.
Yep, yep.
So what that would do is, the draft would be available for the 29th meeting, you know, from there, you know, assuming that there was no, you know, major changes that were needed, and we could have all those conversations and the paperwork done, I would say August would be the procurement, you, I would say early September would be when we have the firm in place, and then it really starts the process.
Right, all right, so this is, so this is what we can also do, since, since the draft, we're not gonna have an ability to look at the draft until the 29th of July. If there are some concerns that each member has, to individually, individually, send an email to Melanie, and she can incorporate those into the draft by, you know, choice A, B, C, D, you know, and then we can go right from there.
So the goal is to get July 29th to finalize that?
Probably, yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Are we able to schedule a meeting prior to that? Can we get a meeting on the 22nd?
Uh, I can't meet on the 22nd.
You can't be there, okay. 15th?
Um, I'd have to take a look at my schedule.
Okay.
But...
I can't be here the 29th, but I can weigh in, in looking at it. That's not a problem, I'm away.
I mean, push come to shove, if we need to, you know, we can...
I feel like the two proposals that we received from Collin Center and Community Paradigm, when we get the RFP back from them, are going to look like what we have in front of us.
I mean, they've done it, so they know, right.
Right. I think the issue becomes that the third party did not include a bottom-line amount of money, which means we cannot look at option one without a bottom-line number, and option two is the Collin Center, because they're part of the mass political subdivision of the Commonwealth.
Right.
So I don't see, but I, I'm pretty sure this, what we're seeing is...
So even if you, for option one, we would have to start from the beginning.
You have to go to the, the mic. Sorry.
No, you have, no, you have to go to the mic.
I wasn't waving to you. Sorry.
So even for option one, I know that's not where you're going, but we would have to start from the beginning anyways, so we would have to create a scope, and that's what they would give us the price based off of.
Correct.
So everybody's would look the same, and be based off the same thing, so.
Chairman, the only, the only thing that I can add to it is that I'd like option three, because I think it gives us a little bit more time to take a look at the additional language that we'd like to add in casting this net a little wider. I think there are so many towns looking for these types of administrative positions, and it's a very constricted market, that if we can lend something to that RFP that casts that net just a pinch wider, from say, the corporate side, with some municipal experience, I think we would do ourselves a favor by doing that. Instead of just the straight RFP that they normally send out, cookie cutter, they know where they're going, they know where they're advertising every time, so I like option three for those reasons.
Well, previously, previously approved the job description, so that, you know, in reviewing that job description, as you make your comments on the draft, you know, I mean, that's something that you can do and send it, you know, like I said, send it singularly directly to Melanie.
Right.
You know? That way, there's no, no appearance of collusion or anything like that.
If we, if we have a decision made on the 29th, would it be possible and prudent that you could supply us with a proposed timeline on the 29th as well, as constricted as possible?
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we can, if, if we agree that this is a proposal going out, it shouldn't take that long to get the proposal out, and you could probably have it back, you know, within, by the end of August. So, you know, you're talking, you know, now you're talking it in September, you know, a review of everything, so.
Yes, to that point, yeah, you know, for the next meeting, Melanie can come with a draft timeframe, you know, from our side, and then obviously, once the firm is brought on, it's gonna be based on their timeframe to a certain degree, and I would just say, if the board or its individual members have a ideal timeframe that we'd want the recruitment to be completed, you know, that may also be a consideration for the draft scope of You know, so I know that the timeframes in each of the initial proposals that were submitted were a little bit different, but if there was something or a goal that the board had in mind, that we can incorporate that.
We can discuss that on the 29th.
Yeah, definitely. So...
I just, excuse me, I just don't wanna go through the, the same thing we went through on the last time, searching for Town Administrator. We wasted an awful lot of time. It was, it was beyond belief, it was six or seven months, and it, there's no need, there's no need for that.
No, hopefully we can narrow it down as much as possible, but I wanna do things the right way.
No, I do too.
You know, I wanna make sure that we do it, and...
Nine or 10 months is an inordinate amount of time.
Well, it's actually, to be honest with you, it really isn't, you know, some of the communities have gone longer, so, you know, and that, not only that, we have to run almost a concurrent search, because we gotta look for a town plan it, so. But anyway, so that's your, so that's pretty much it, so we've agreed to have Melanie take care of this, and now you guys take a look at and send your comments individually to Melanie about the whole thing, we take care of that.
So, Mr. McDonnell, should I make a motion that we work with option three?
Right.
For, to create an RFP for this process?
Yep, and to have the RFP available for us, our meeting on the July 29th.
July 29th.
Oh, second.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, is, are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. All right.
All right. I just think that, I planted a seed last time, there's just, I think it's really important that we have a, a sub-plan, that if we come in pretty dry, we don't have enough candidates, or we're not satisfied with the quality of candidates, what is the firm we pick, what is their strategy after that?
Well, that's, could be part of the, that could be part of the narrative in the RFP.
That's a...
It's a distinct possibility.
Exactly.
Right, it's a distinct possibility.
And I think that'll tell a lot about the firms and what they, their response to that is.
Yep, that could be part of the narrative. Okay, all right, moving on. All right, so I know I, I talked to the board about this the, a little last meeting. We are, well, we had a request for some type of a proclamation for a resident who was turning 100 years old, and we, I requested some information, and I never got that information, but albeit said, I started thinking about, you know, what do we as a town do for people who turn 100? Some people may recall the Boston Post, which was the predecessor to the Herald American, which is now the Boston Herald, used to do a program where they would provide a cane to the residents of the oldest, their oldest resident of each municipality that participated. Dartmouth never participated in this program, so we don't have a Boston cane. So trying to think of what, what better way to do this, and what we as a board would like to do is to set up a, part of our webpage to honor any Dartmouth resident, either who has been a past resident of the town, or current resident of the town, who has turned 100 years, or because we're starting this program, if there's anybody out there older than 100, who's 101-plus, and I believe there are a few people, we would like to just offer a proclamation thanking them, celebrating their birthday, but also come up with this coin, and Peter, if you can, this coin that's there, my company, North Dartmouth Properties, has donated these coins to the town, there's, actually, there's 100 of them, and this is the coin that we will be given to each resident who turns 100 years old, or who have, if, in this case, if they're older, and they can keep the coin. And I will turn, I will turn the coin, yes, there's heads and tails, I will turn the coin over to the town to, so that we can have somewhere in a secure place to have. And this is going to have, it needs the assistance of the council and agent to determine who these residents are, also the town clerk, I know she has a database of those who are in their ages, so, but it'll also have Chad and our MIS department to make sure that we have a webpage, that we will post the person, the date that we were, you know, that they turned 100, doesn't necessarily, it can be their first name, middle initial, the last name initial, or their first initial, last name, whichever, how, whoever they feel comfortable with, and then just keep it something real. And I just thought it'd be something a little bit different, you know, for, for the board and the community to, to honor those who, you know, make it to that tremendous number. So I do, normally I would crack a joke at this time with Stanley, but, you know, I'm not going to do that, so, even though Stanley has about 19 years to go.
He's got a coin.
Mr. McDonnell, I thank yourself and North Dartmouth Properties for funding this project. I think it's a great, a great project, and I'm glad that the, unlike the post cane, which would, the person would keep, and until they passed, it stayed with them, this is, this will be nice for the individual to receive and keep, and their family to have, to mark a century of life, it's pretty amazing, so.
Good job, Sean.
Yep, so, you know, it wasn't easy, the, the, the problem was, was what size coin? Didn't wanna, didn't want a small coin, you know, like a half-dollar size, so I ended up going with a two-and-a-half-inch size coin, and then it was easy getting the design, because all I had to do was, you know, take the town seal, put it on a round disc, and just do that.
But the font is...
The back was a little bit harder to do.
Easily, easy to read, so it's very nice.
Yeah, and, and it just, it just basically says, it's celebrating 100 years, and it's presented by the Dartmouth Select Board, so even if maybe 50 years from now, if we change our type of government, it'll still be the Dartmouth Select Board, so.
Right.
Mr. Tattelbaum.
Great idea. Thank you for stepping forward. Is there any reason to make sure that we, you know, if you live here, is there any criteria that has to, so there's no question that someone deserves it, and we can't?
I would think, I would think if you were born in Dartmouth, and if you lived the majority of your life in Dartmouth.
Born in Dartmouth?
Born in Dartmouth. I mean, it does happen. I mean...
No, I, that's a big deal. I mean, it's a big difference.
Oh, wait a minute, it's, it's born in Dartmouth, or lived in Dartmouth, or is a current resident in Dartmouth. I think that's...
Pretty wide open, then.
Yes, that makes it wide open. I mean, if somebody, you know, somebody just happens to, you know, they lived in Befford, and then they moved to Dartmouth when they were 98, and they're still here, I, yeah, why not? Good for you.
Do we need to state that?
Yes, we'll, we'll come up with, we'll come up with something for the website as to, you know, who will be eligible, and then we'll go from there.
What am I going to put my name?
It's not like it's, it's not like you have to determine who the oldest person is in town, you know, and I always thought that that both, that Boston Post game was kind of like, okay, you're next, you know, so.
So the, so the rules will be posted there, so everybody knows?
Yeah, yeah, we'll have something up, so. But in the meantime, in the meantime, what we'll do is, we already have a draft proclamation, you know, so that when we do have it, the board members will sign it, and then either the chair or a designee will, you know, present it to the person.
We could possibly give the option, if someone wanted to come in, we could give it to them here?
We could do that, too. But for somebody 100 years old, we can go to them.
They may want to come here.
I know, maybe. Hopefully, somebody will drive them. I do know...
I'll get on my scooter and all of a sudden.
I do know, trust me, I have a resident who was 104, and he was driving. It was in Rhode Island, thank God, so.
Get my scooter on, bingo.
All right, with that.
Do we need to vote on that?
I don't think so.
I think we're good.
There is nothing else on the agenda tonight.
That's it.
That's it. No kidding.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, so actually, does any of the members of the board have any updates? Ms. O'Neill?
I do, Mr. Chairman. The, I received a, an email from Michael Moynihan at Senator Mark Montigny's office recently with a neighbor issue, and a neighborhood issue that we have in town. Mr. Norman Leroux lives in the crossroad area between Hicksville Bridge and the Faunce Corner exit, and the neighbors have been having a heck of a time with the noise from the tractor trailers coming off of 195 East, turning onto the Faunce Corner Road exit. And he's been trying to figure out exactly what companies are involved, if it's specific to a company, or, but the neighborhood is, is suffering pretty well from this issue. They're having a very difficult time being out in their backyards, on their decks, even in the house, it's, it vibrates the houses. There are young kids out there that are trying to sleep, sometimes it's at night, so it's become quite a problem. So Mark's office reached out to me and asked if we could do anything about it. He had agreed to reach out to the Mass State Police to talk with them, because they're so close, they're in and out of that exit quite a bit, so if they see it, they'll, they'll do what they can. So I reached out to some friends at the DOT. They said that they'd be more than willing to give us a engine braking prohibited sign for the right-of-way on 195 East. The only issue is, I guess, the town is responsible for the installation of the signs because it's in the right-of-way, not the DOT. So actually, somebody came by and delivered it to me. So I actually have it in the car, and I'm not sure exactly, you know, if I can just present that down to, to Tim Barber and, and Paul down at the DPW, but I wanted to, to bring it in front of you first, just to get your, your okay on doing something like that, or if there's another process that we have to go through in order to do that, I'd like to. Thank you.
I'm wondering if the traffic safety officer has to be involved, because generally, with, with any kind of signage, I know it's the DPW who puts it up, but I'm wondering if the tractor, tractor safety officer has to take a look at it and whatnot, so I'm, maybe, Chris, you can contact Mr. Barber?
Yeah.
And talk to Officer Canario to see if he needs to be involved in that, and let's see what we can do. I know, I know the traffic, the tractor situation, I mean, you've got UPS in there, you have Reese Stone Farm, you also have the Robinson Farm with the cattle, because once in a while, one of the cattle gets loose and, you know, and gets on 195. I don't know if Walmart uses that cut-through. I do know that I've seen the Walmart truck using Faunce Corner Road Route 6, because not only is that a problem on Cross Road, it's also a problem on Reed Road, where you have the tractors. I mean, really, if you, like I've, I've said it previous and many, many times, there's only four ways, you know, into this town, you know, that's Route 6, Faunce Corner Road, you know, Reed Road, and 140, and that's pretty much it. So you're going to get tracked, you know, you're going to get a lot of tractor-trailer traffic, deliveries, restaurant deliveries, supply deliveries and whatnot, using one of those four. The ideal thing would be to have them come off of, you know, Route 88 onto Route 6, or use Faunce Corner Road or 140. Avoid Cross Road, avoid Reed Road, that would be the ultimate, but sometimes that doesn't happen, so.
Chairman?
Yeah.
I would suggest that maybe, the sign may be a great idea, and it may work, but I, I would suggest that maybe we consider a public hearing, the people in the neighborhood can come talk to us and get the parties involved. Then maybe there's more things we can do than just a sign. People, I think they deserve to be heard, and maybe it's times, diversions, directions, who knows? I, I'm not that familiar with the whole thing, and I'd like to see the total package of what we could do, and then maybe make some more, more quality, diverse decisions as to what we can do to help out.
Well, we can do that, but right now, let's, let's see what, you know, between Tim Barber and Officer Canario, what to do. I mean, basically, it's a sign saying no air brakes, but, you know.
So where, where is the sign proposed?
It would probably be somewhere along...
Between the Hicksville Bridge and Faunce Corner Road.
Yeah.
Because when you go in the other way on Faunce Corner, no neighborhoods.
Correct, correct.
The only neighborhood is...
Who suggested that?
The DOT.
DOT?
And the, well, and the neighborhood, actually. The neighborhood is right there, so.
So that sign could be one part of the solution, and maybe the only, but there may be other things we can do more locally as well. Yes?
Generally, I would say if, if there's anything we can do is, you know, we can send out an email blast or a letter blast to, you know, some of the businesses and...
Yeah, that's true. I think the only other suggestion is to do some type of reminder, because there really is only so much you can do from an enforcement standpoint. I mean, we're really, it, it's for the local companies that have to use that exit, and it, it just makes the most, you know, it's most convenient for them, it makes the most sense. There's no sense that we can't send out just a quick reminder that, you know, we've got a neighborhood behind those trees over there, it's, the sign's going up as a reminder, really, because there's a question of how much we can actually enforce the thing, but we're looking to, we're looking to, you know, request their consideration when their trucks are coming off of that exit.
Maybe we can get a list of businesses that would generally have large trucks in and out of the town on a regular basis.
Yeah.
There can't be that many.
No, no, I can't imagine there are.
If we could isolate these companies, the names of them, and, and send a nice letter out to, you know, their, their general offices and, and ask for their consideration.
Yeah, I've taken a picture of the sign, we can send that along with the, and just ask them for their consideration.
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Brooks, do you have anything?
Nothing, this time.
Mr. Mickelson?
No.
Mr. Talabon?
I'd like just to mention for a possible future meeting, the, the combined sewer overflow issue is becoming very public and very often, and I know we have, may have limited issues or solutions, but we also can possibly take some action, because it involves the EPA, involves the city of New Bedford primarily, and what can we as a town do to, because right now, the, the process is dead in the water. But now, even with, just with a weather report that it might rain, there's an overflow. Every single time now it sprinkles or rains, there's an issue, and there's nothing that's being done about it. And I'm wondering if we can have a, coalesce the right parties, and maybe even the right of the city of New Bedford, whatever, into this body to see if we can do, take some action and do something, because just sitting by and doing nothing, when the issue is a, not only a giant issue, but also a giant solution, and involves well beyond our own capabilities, I think, just to sit around and do nothing about it, I think we should consider that.
I think probably the, the best course of action, in my opinion, would be to have our, you know, our Director of Health reach out to the city of New Bedford, you know, and have a, you know, interdepartmental meeting before it gets to this level, and see what they can come up with, and then whatever is an outcome from that, then come here, you know, and then let's meet and discuss, you know, maybe even, you know, invites, you know, one or two or three of the city councilors, you know, to discuss the problem, and anybody who, you know.
We, we had a Zoom meeting last year in that same regard, and this all goes back to the mayor, his attitude about what can be done. They've spent $500 million trying to solve that problem, and they did solve part of it, but they left a giant portion remaining.
And it affects us.
Directly. And now it's starting to affect New Bedford residents, because now it's so bad, New Bedford beaches are closing, and we're pouring stuff into that Buzzers Bay that's just, and this is a long-term, difficult, expensive solution, but just to sit around, it's, it goes beyond committees and councilors. This is a EPA and mayor, city of New Bedford issue, but...
Yeah, Sean?
Yes.
David, I can't agree more. I've been back and forth with Rick Tripillo from Fairhaven, who's on the planning board over there, and he's, you know, he's trying to, he's trying to stay 10,000 feet on it without pointing too many fingers.
Yep.
And really looking at it as a, as a regional issue, we're all involved in it. This, I, I sent him a discharge table from the city of New Bedford last, last week. I'm just looking at it, updated now on 6:30. Millions of gallons, .64 million, .35 million, this is all in one day.
Yep.
On 6:30, 4.78 million gallons, 2.73 million gallons, and now these are different discharge points and outfall locations just within the city system. And for, for the public, the issue is that the city of New Bedford, because of its age and its infrastructure, has one system in most areas, in the older areas, where there's a discharge of both sewer and rainwater.
Right.
And those combine in the same pipe, and if it gets down because of a, now the, the rain events are being, you know, they're smaller and smaller, and it's still causing a problem. Once they get down to the plant, the plant can't handle that amount of effluent, and it has to release into the harbor in certain areas in order that the, the system isn't completely overrun. So, you know, there's a, there's a CSO, Combined Sewer Outflow Discharge Table on the city of New Bedford's website. If anybody's interested in it, I suggest they go take a look at it. The study goes back years and years, and I can't tell you how many millions and millions of gallons. We just had two more beaches closed the other day because of a, you know, a short, but, but significant rainfall in, in, you know, as far as timeframe goes. So I, I'm with you, David. I think we need to, we need to look at this as a regional issue. New Bedford is, is the bulk of it, because they're bigger, they're older, but the city of, the town of Dartmouth, Fairhaven, Mattapoy St. Marion, over to Westport, we really need to get together on this, because it can be done, we can do it. It's going to take a hell of a lot of money, but, you know, we talked to, we talked to Michael at Congressman Keating's office, and, you know, he'd love to do it, too, but it's just a matter of trying to get the money out of Congress, because this is, this is a national...
EPA.
It's an EPA issue, for sure.
Being a member of the harbor management plan, we are working on with, with Chris as well, on a water quality issue and realigning some of our committees that we're working on, and this is really an offshoot of the same issue. If you want to keep it at a lower level, and try to work with the Board of Health, Mr. Micho, and try to get the regional people involved, I would, I would happy to take it on and then present it to the Select Board, because to me, it's all part of the same water quality.
I think it, it is, but I, I think what I'd like to do is, is get a dialogue started at, you know, at the, at the department level, you know, before it gets here, because when it gets here...
Well, makes a lot of noise getting it.
... tendency to have, you know...
Gets a lot of noise, and maybe that's what it takes.
Right. Eventually, there will be a lot of noise, but, you know, if I recall, remember looking at this, looking at the, the map, there's got to be at least eight, eight discharge points in Clocks Cove, if not more, and there's like 12 or 20 of them on the Acushan Avenue side. So, you know, this is affecting, you know...
They're finally closing the Bedford beaches, which they were not because it's so bad.
Yeah.
And I, I would happy to take it on as part of this water quality issue, and then present it back to the board, and I work with, of course, we're working with Chris Micho as well at the same time, so.
I certainly understand, excuse me, having Chris Micho reach out to his counterpart in New Bedford, but I think we have to look at, you know, a, a short window. This is the time that people want to have access to the beaches, and want that access to be available all the time, and have a clean experience. So I think if we say to, to Chris in the next, you know, few weeks, and again, add that to the June, the July 29th meeting, an update on where we are with this.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
I'll take that on, okay.
Yeah, it also affects the local boaters, the fishermen, the...
Shelf fish areas, it's just, yeah, I mean...
This is a water quality catastrophe, and all is going to get worse, because the, the tonnage, I think, I think our harbor masts have told us that one storm was 30 million gallons of refuse, one storm alone.
Now it's jumping.
Okay, I'll take, I'll aim for the 29th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? I have nothing. So, with that, do you have anything for us?
Nothing to say, man.
Are you waiting till next week?
Okay, all right.
So, waiting for the next one. All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks, on the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none unanimous. Good night, everybody.